We are live streaming on our YouTube channel and the reporting will be available on the YouTube channel following the meeting. And again, thank you for your patience. We just returned from our budget workshop regarding the audit this evening. Please rise and join us in the recording.
Let's leave this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would also like to have a moment of silence for Marie Hunt, a Rainham mother of three Bridgewater Rainham students who tragically passed away on August 8th, 2025. Our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family and her children and friends. Thank you. I would like to introduce our school committee members and admin and attend this this evening for a regular school committee meeting. On my left, I have Mr. Fitzgibbons, Ms. Hoy Thomas, Mr. Guthrum, Superintendent Powers. On my right, I have Mrs. Conrad Laverinto, Vice Chair Loesch, and myself, Rachel Kings, superintendent chair. We also have the attendings, Assistant Superintendent Mary, Mrs. McDougal, the reporting secretary, and other members of the admin team and attendants. First on our agenda, we have the fiscal year 2024 audit. Each year, the school committee tries to have two professional development workshops, and generally in the fall, we have a budget-related one. This evening, prior to the school committee meeting, we opted to use this workshop to review the fiscal year 2024 audit, which we just received. We invited Renee Davis, the manager-director at CBIS CPA's PC, to attend the workshop and review the audit process, highlight anything specific she wanted the committee to note, and answer questions school committee members have had regarding the audit. I would like to invite Miss Davis to the microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening. I appreciate it.
Thanks. So, we did just meet for an hour to go over a presentation related to the fiscal year 2024 audit and the results of that audit. What an audit does, we as independent auditors are hired by the school to come in and review and give an opinion on your financial statements. For an audit, always sort of looking in the back, we were going through the results of the fiscal year 2024 audit, very soon to start the fiscal year 2025 audit. What we do as auditors is we look at your financial statements and test the amounts and the disclosures to make sure that they are accurate and that the controls in place to prepare that information are intact and acceptable. The results are unmodified fully. There were unmodified opinions. We own just the three pages of the audit report that includes CBIS CPA's opinion on the financial statements. Unmodified, there were no findings related to our testing that had to be reported. We had a couple of small suggestions for improvements and controls and reconciliations that we went over in detail. We talked to the staff about nothing material, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies that were reported. We also, prior to that meeting, asked for questions specifically related to the financial statements or the audit process. We, through that process, received several questions and went into a more detailed explanation of how the numbers in the financial statements relate to funds that are available for you to use in the budget process, specifically the state-certified E and D number, and how the two work together and go together. Nothing of significance, again, was reported, and it's what we consider a clean audit, clean audit opinion. The anticipation this year is that it will go a little bit smoother and that the audit report can get issued faster. I think we're ready to start this year 25, the E and D process, getting that ready for the state in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. And the reason that this audit came in so late, would you just...
Sure. Sure. There's a lot of different things that go into an audit, gathering the information. We do have to prepare the financial statements, gathering that information, testing. It takes a while. This year was particularly different in that we started last year's audit under a smaller CPA firm, Powers and Sullivan, was the firm that I've worked at for several years, and we've done your audit annually. We had two mergers over the year. We first merged with a national company, Markham P., then during the year, last November, we merged with CBIS CPA, which is a known national company. So, the processes in going through that have changed quite a bit. We anticipate that that's all done now. There'll be no more changes in the process, so we should go smoothly this year.
Thank you. And what were the two minor recommendations that you had for the business office?
Sure. One of them related to reconciling items in the cash account. So, what we test your cash balances, the balances that are in the banks compared to what's in your financial statements or annual ledger. There are reconciling items always outstanding on cash checks. There are timing differences between the two. There were approximately $25,000 in older items, old void checks that just haven't been properly recorded in the ledger. So, the recommendation is that those be cleaned up. You've identified what they are. You know where they are. You just have to read the entries in the ledger. That was about $25,000. The other one relates to reconciliation of student activity accounts. Student activity accounts are allowed by Mass General Law. This is for money that's collected by students for things such as field trips or clubs or groups. And the principals in each of the schools is allowed to have a separate checking account with the school committee's approval within the limits established by the school committee. Those accounts then have to be reconciled back to the district's ledgers. That reconciliation process has not happened. The reason we didn't think it was material or significant is that the variance has not significantly changed in several years. It's been approximately $45,000 as a variance. It changes a little bit year to year, but not significantly. You do need to have procedures in place to both reconcile those and then have a specific agreement upon procedures engagement done to verify that those operations are acting as they should.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Thank you. So, on a roughly $100 million budget, you had recommendations on improvements of $70,000 of that budget, correct?
That's true.
Thank you. And then, my other question, which I asked you in the meeting, but I want to have it on TV and everything, because you have a huge audience now. Almost hundreds of people watch us, believe it or not. You talked, and there was a question about forensic audit, and did you do that? And the answer was no. And we understand why, because you're here to just check the books, make sure it all works, and that you do a forensic audit when you suspect fraud somewhere. Would you, in your professional opinion as an auditor, ever ask someone to come in and do a forensic audit where you didn't have a reasonable suspicion of fraud occurring somewhere and send them on a fishing expedition, so to speak?
Yeah, just to clarify that. So, we did not do a forensic audit. That's not what we're engaged to do. We do procedures as part of giving an opinion on your financial statements. We test amounts in transactions. We look at your internal controls. There's a significant amount of work that goes into verifying that the information in your controls are accurate. If we, through those procedures, identify any weaknesses in your controls, or if we identify fraud, we are required to report that to you. It's not the reason for the audit, but if we find it, we certainly have to report it. There was none of that identified. So, to answer your question, when would you engage someone to do a forensic audit? It would only be if you suspected. It has to be very specific what you're asking somebody to look at. If you, for example, expected and thought that there could be payroll fraud, you would say, these are the parameters. You would have to tell the forensic auditors what you want them to look at and what you want them. You have to agree with them what they're going to do to be able to verify that. It is not, we just want a forensic audit of everything.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? And again, just to let everyone know, we did have hard copies here, if anyone. I think we have a few copies left, maybe, if anyone needed one. I know Mrs. Riley's here from the town, if you want a hard copy. We also emailed a copy to both towns as well, and I'm sure Mr. Powers will be putting it up on the website if anyone else wanted to review that as well. So, thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes minutes dated July 23rd, 2025, and August 4th, 2025. Excuse me. Sorry, I wasn't done. And payroll ledger board dated August 6th, 2025, and August 11th, 2025.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Conrad Laverinto, second by Mr. Loesch. Any discussion? Or actually, not on consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda is correspondence. Under general community correspondence received, this month since our last meeting, I received an email from a community member with questions regarding the Coleman Center Agreement and asking for specifics as to the scope of work, et cetera. Mr. Powers responded to this with specifics. We received an email from a community member praising two of our staff members who went beyond for family and their time of need. We received an email from a community member requesting to be able to school choice into one of our middle schools. Mr. Powers and myself both responded to that. Second on that was MASC. I received correspondence, and I wanted to note that the Mass Association of School Committee, Mass Association of School Superintendent, joint conference is scheduled for November 12th through November 14th this year at the Emerald Resort and Conference Center in Hyannis. Each year, the school committee does have tickets to attend. Due to budget cuts, this year, we will only have one ticket per day, and as the school committee delegate, I will attend on behalf of the school committee during the workshop days as well as the delegate vote on Friday. I will bring forward any resolutions and my vote recommendations at our October meeting and approval. And next on the agenda, still under correspondence, is the letter to towns in response to their July 2025 correspondence. As we know, we did receive correspondence from the towns prior to our July meeting. We did discuss that letter at our July meeting, and it was agreed upon that I would draft a response to that letter to be reviewed at this meeting and then forwarded in response to both town of Bridgewater and town of Rainham. We did also discuss that at the joint working group meeting that we held last week. A copy of that response was uploaded to your Google Drive, and several committee members provided feedback, which was incorporated, and the letter was revised. Do I have... I'm going to put a motion on the floor to accept that letter in a moment, and then I will accept. I will entertain a motion to accept the draft response letter and allow the chair to send the letter to the towns on behalf of the school committee.
Sub move.
Motion made by Mr. Loesch. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Conrad Laverinto. Do I have any other feedback or questions on the letter from any committee members?
Chair.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Thank you for putting it together. I think we heard it from the auditor as well, so I think it ties in very well with that. So, thank you for doing that.
Thank you. So, if this is approved, once we take this vote, I will email this to the towns based on our response. And then, we do have a September joint meeting with both Rainham, Bridgewater, and the school committee that we can further discuss their requests regarding the operational audit, kind of go over what the auditor just said, when our next move is what we want to do based on the next budget year that we're looking at right now. Any other comments or questions?
Does it need one edit with the 112 budget due to use that receipt?
I did make that edit to the final version. Thank you.
That might be good under this to announce that to everybody.
I had that under Mr. Powers.
Oh, okay. All right, all right.
I didn't want to steal his letter. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I appreciate everyone reviewing that and what's her provided feedback. Next, we have public comment. The school committee welcomes information, concerns, and opinions from those attending the meeting. In order to give those wishing an opportunity to speak and ensure compliance with the open meeting law and other obligations and avoid disruption, the committee will not engage with the speaker or one another in deliberation as comments are presented during the comment period. At its discretion, the committee may schedule issues raised by a speaker for deliberation at a future meeting. To reiterate, this is a time for members of the public to voice comments and concerns regarding agenda items, and the committee is not able to respond. If you would like a personal response, please email the committee or Superintendent Powers directly following the meeting. The chair will now open up public comment for a period of 12 minutes per policy BEDH, and would ask anyone who wishes to speak to approach the podium, provide your name and address, and please limit comments to three minutes. I will open up public comment at 7:25. Do we have anyone who would like to speak? Are two members of the public? Seeing none, I will close public comment at 7:25. You'll have one more chance. Next, we have administrative and school committee reports, report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the school committee, members of the audience, as well as the administrative team. I did want to provide just a few brief updates and overview supporting. As Mr. Fitzgibbons said, we did receive information from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that we have been officially removed, or I think they even were terminated, from the 112 budget. As you know, both towns had recently approved our revised budget from the school committee, and we had submitted all that information to the department for their review. Obviously, we were battling somewhat of a scheduling conflict on their end. So, finally, we were able to have all parties review that from the department, and they did send us correspondence just the other day that we are now officially off the 112 budget. So, what does that mean for is, obviously, we have shared that information with the towns. We can now start to receive the fiscal year 26 full assessments that the towns provide to us on a monthly basis. We had essentially put a hiring, sorry, spending freeze in place as well, and so now we have those funds available to be able to spend supplies, resources, to get school up and running. Obviously, some of our facilities projects, not just capital, but everyday facility maintenance projects that need to take place, those have all started to happen as well. So, we're excited that we're removed from this, especially given the fact that, you know, teachers and staff are coming back next week. As you know, we did not have those expenses over the summer months, salary expenses over the summer months. We were very worried that if we were not off the 112 to start the school year, that would present significant challenges. But thankfully, we are. So, I wanted to start there. I did also want to share a few other updates. We did hold our new teacher orientation today. We welcomed 17 new educators, I believe, Ms. Healy, here to the lecture hall at the high school. Just to point out, and I know you know this, but for the public's sake, these are not 17 additional positions over last year. As you know, and I'll get into staffing in a minute, we obviously had to reduce staff going into this year. But some of the staff that we had hoped to be able to call back took jobs in other districts, or we did have some retirements that we knew we were going to fill. And so, these positions reflect those that we knew we were going to fill going into this year. Majority of the individuals that we hired, and as you know, this is a commitment for us, did fall under our student services department, so we were able to welcome them. Ms. DeAngelo and her team spent about 45 minutes working with our student services providers, just talking to them about all things student services related, kind of some of our district policies and procedures. Ms. Joyce and Ms. Richards spent some time with our classroom teachers, our general education teachers, and Mrs. Barry spent some time with some of our elementary arts teachers. And I did want to just thank Mrs. Barry and Mrs. Healy for putting together today's event. I also wanted to give a shout out to BREA. I know Mr. Conroy is here, but each year, they do sponsor a luncheon for our new educators after the fact. They welcome them down into the school where they can enjoy lunch and get to learn a little bit more about BREA and all the benefits that the union provides. But I did want to just thank them for doing that. It's always a nice transition to be able to welcome our staff, provide them some information, but then to be able to feed them after the fact. So, thank you for doing that. We did start the month of August, holding our administrative retreat. I know it's not much of a retreat. If you think of, you know, we're not whisking anyone away for spa days or anything like that. It really is a full day of professional development for our administrative team. We held that here in the district, actually at the high school in the library. We obviously engage in activities district related. We look at our student success plan. We look at goals and objectives for the upcoming year. We obviously review the prior year. We talk about educational leadership and philosophy. We also bring in outside presenters as well, so we did have one on artificial intelligence to help our administrative team, you know, increase their capacity and awareness, because obviously, we know that is certainly a way of the future. Many of our students are using AI. Many of our faculty are using AI. So, for us as leaders, we wanted to make sure that we're staying one step ahead of everybody. But it also afforded us the opportunity for us to learn how we can use it as an administrative team as well. I actually created a podcast, I'm quite proud of, something I never, ever thought I'd be doing, but I have it if I could play it for you later, if you'd like. And then, obviously, we had our legal updates from Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lehane, as they always do. They come in to talk about case law, any other recent changes for the school year. Another thing to share, we have once again been selected, two of our schools to participate in the NAPM, which is the National Assessment of Educational Progress. It really is an assessment given to all states across the district. It allows the U.S. Department of Education to compare states against one another with one unifying assessment. Over the years that have been here in the district, multiple times have been selected. This coming school year, Bridgewater Middle School, the grade eight, students will take mathematics and reading, and the Williams Intermediate School read for mathematics and reading as well. And the testing window will be sometime between January and March. Williams was selected last year as well, but they never followed up with a lot of the Williams, the two schools selected last year. So, it looks as though that Williams will be tested this year. And then, I did want to obviously, you know, provide an overview of FY '26, share the good news about the 112 budget, which then, you know, also transitions. And this is information that we'll be bringing forward to you next month, because as you know, any type of grant or acceptance of funds needs to be approved. But we do have our federal grant allocations for the school year. Obviously, you know, even though we have to go through the process of applying for our grants, this is money that has been allocated to the district. So, it is ours as long as we complete the application in full. I wish, you know, every year's never been an issue for us. But we'll be sharing that information with you. And, you know, pleased to report our allocations did go up this year, which is great. Obviously, we'll be able to use that money. Some of these federal grants are very specific in what we can use this money for. So, for example, Title I. Title I funds are to provide reading and math services to schools that are identified as Title I schools based on, you know, funding data, income data, and so forth. That money is specific to those positions. So, we couldn't take our Title I money and use it for regular classroom staff. We have to use it for positions that are going to be providing Title I services, whether it be, you know, your traditional Title I teacher that you may think of. It could be, you know, some type of other remedial or accelerated services that we're providing. But, you know, even though we had about $100,000 more this year than we did last year, it's very specific in what we can use. Title II is another grant that we receive. Again, those funds went up, and we're actually using those funds as we did last year. We have a little bit more flexibility. We can use those funds for class size reduction positions. So, that is something that we'll continue to do. Title III is obviously for our English learners. That money is specific for them. And Title IV is really for us to look at technology, students' health and wellbeing, mental health and wellbeing, and then, you know, high-quality education for our staff. So, again, that went down a little bit, but we will use those funds to provide some of our professional development and pay for that. But more to come on that. Just wanted to kind of let you know that we did receive those funds in addition to our special education grants that we are also entitled to, the 262 grant, which is an early childhood grant that goes to help with some of our preschool expenses, and then what they're for, the 240 grant, that's the IDA grant, which is really our larger special education grant. It was a little over 1.6 up from 1.5 last year. So, again, a nice increase there, and that will go directly to providing services and necessary resources to our students. Moving into, along FY '26, but moving into the school year, I did send over a document to you, Stephanie, or Mrs. McDougal did, so thank you for doing that, Mrs. McDougal, just around staffing and class size. This obviously is information that is fluid and ever-changing, and Meg can attest to this. You know, we're talking on a regular basis about students enrolling and students withdrawing, and it is changing on a daily basis. And so, the information you have on this sheet may have already changed by the time you're actually looking at it, and may change by Friday, and certainly could change next week. We would actually anticipate it to change next week. Not significantly, but obviously, student here and there. What you have on your piece of paper, I tried to just capture it all onto one document, so you're not looking at a staffing, you're not looking at a class size document, you're looking at it all in one place. But as it's broken down, you see that we started with Bridgewater K to 8, and I tried to go grade level by grade level, but I also provided you some notes on the other side, on the side about each individual school. So, when you're looking at the Mitchell Elementary School, and we focused on kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, we didn't include preschool for these purposes, they did not lose any positions from last year. Now, that doesn't mean they didn't lose staff, but what you're going to find in most cases is we actually moved staff around. So, at the Mitchell Elementary, we actually transferred a staff member in there to help fill some of the voids. And so, when you see that they didn't lose any staff from last year, you know, I just wanted to be able to explain that to you, that we have to maintain staffing by transferring staff in. And as we get into some of the other schools where we transferred staff, I'll obviously get into that as well. But you can see without losing staff, still trying to maintain class size where we could. It's not, I would never advocate that this is great class size, so we're maintaining what we would consider higher class size than desired. But it did allow us right now, based on enrollment as of today, and I say as of today, and I'll say it multiple times, because it could be different for tomorrow, we're looking on average of having 26 students in kindergarten class at the Mitchell, a little over 26 in first grade, 26.1. And obviously, you can't have a tenth of a student, so really looking at, you know, 27 in some cases, but just for mathematical reasons, I included the decimals here. And grade two would be 27.7. Certainly, again, not ideal. You know, when we look historically at some of our class size data over the last couple of years, 26, 27 is on the higher end. It's not significantly different. When we look at some of our past grade levels, especially on the Bridgewater side, they are hovering around that 26 average, where Rainham has been a little bit lower. But it hasn't been uncommon for us to have a class at 26 or 27, especially as we go up in the grades. However, you know, 26 at the kindergarten, first grade level is not ideal, and not something that I know school committees certainly would never advocate for, but that is our reality. As we start to go up in the grades, you can see the Williams Intermediate School, they did lose two positions. Both were due to retirements that we did not fill. So, and again, we had to make some internal moves with staff to kind of chase some enrollment bubbles. But by doing that, not filling those positions, we will have a class size average of grade three of 28.3, grade four 28.3 as well, and grade five 28.3 as well. But actually, the involvement was very, very similar in all three grades. But again, by moving staff around, we were able to maintain that as well. But we did lose, you know, two staff members there because of retirement. In grade six at the O'Donoghue Middle School, we are down three positions. Again, actually, we lost more. Again, actually, we lost more teaching positions than that, but because we have internal transfers, we did transfer staff from other schools to make up for some of these losses. But as it stands right now, we have gone from 10 teachers per grade level at six, seven, and eight, down to nine teachers per grade level. And you can see we lost one due to retirement and two due to layoffs. Class size averages, you know, low 30 is 31.4, 32.6, and 32.3, giving us an overall class size average on the Bridgewater side, K to 8 at 29. But again, we transferred multiple staff members, and you'll see this down below, multiple staff members from the high school to fill some of the openings at the middle school level. So, they are essentially, there are more staff members that we unfortunately were not able to bring back, but you will see the significant hit at the high school to minimize the impact on the middle schools. Rainham, again, very similar, I've set this up for you. Our kindergarten has lost two positions, one due to retirement, one due to layoff. You can see the projected kindergarten numbers for next year at 26.8. The other thing that we did, and obviously, when we started to look at, you know, do we need to transfer staff, is trying to keep the numbers equitable, not ideal, but equitable across the district. So, if we had 26 in Bridgewater in kindergarten, we wanted to try to come as close as possible to 26 on the Rainham side and vice versa. We did have a couple of situations where it just didn't make sense to make transfers, because we were going to solve a problem and create a problem, essentially, you know, flip-flopping numbers. First grade, we did not lose any staff, and that bubble coming up into first grade is somewhat low. So, the class size average for next year is right now projected to be at 23.2. Here's an example of where, you know, if we took a teacher from Merrill and sent that teacher over to Mitchell, again, we're essentially flipping the problem. So, now Bridgewater would be at 23, and Rainham would be at 26. Grade two at La Liberty, grade three, I'm sorry, grades two, three, and four at La Liberty, they are down two positions overall, one due to a transfer. We did transfer one second grade teacher from La Liberty over to Mitchell, and we unfortunately had to lay another position off. So, you can see the class size is at La Liberty, again, not ideal, nothing that we're advocating for. 26.5 in grade two, 31.3 in grade three, and 30 in grade four. The numbers obviously are much higher when we get into the middle school level. RMS is down five positions overall. Again, even, we were able, you know, transferred some staff into that school to be able to try to minimize the negative impact, but even still being down five is significant. We had two retirements that we did not fill, and the three positions that we did not fill because of layoffs. And so, they are down five altogether, and you can see in grade five, the class size average right now will be 33, 34 in grade six, 34.6, 35.4 in grade seven, and 30 in grade eight. For an overall average, K to 8 in Rainham of 30.1. And then we get into the high school, and I've shared this information with you before, that the high school unfortunately has taken the largest hit. Obviously, it's our biggest building, but just even significantly has been negatively impacted. You can see they're down 21 positions altogether. It's 21, 20 teaching positions plus the guidance counselor, 21 altogether. There were five retirements that we did not fill. There were five teachers that we transferred from the high school to the middle school level, and then unfortunately, there were 11 positions that we did not fill due to layoffs. And then obviously, district-wide, we are down positions as well. As you know, we reduced positions in the facilities department for the second year in a row. We had obviously reduced the number of secretaries. Obviously, our secretaries play such a vital role in the organization in our schools. We, you know, we are feeling that the losses there. One in particular, I just wanted to point out, our administrative assistant for transportation. Unfortunately, we're not able to fill that position. I know Mr. Lucini has made every effort to absorb that, but there is still a great responsibility placed on central registration, Judy and Natalie and the superintendent's office. And so, you know, that is a position that is much needed. Obviously, it's something that we brought on, and we are, you know, feeling the impacts of that. Obviously, we're down support positions, proctors across the district at various sites. And then we're down three administrative central office positions. We currently have, as you know, we did not fill the La Liberty elementary principal position, so we have one administrative position there. Ms. Richards and Ms. Westell, they work together, so to ensure that we always have two administrators over there. But we, by doing that, have essentially lost a teaching and learning position at central office. We also have our coordinator of family and student supports, Sarah Moore, who I know you know. She served many roles. She was the attendance officer, the court liaison. She also was the homeless liaison, the kidney pento liaison, organized many of our support and resources for our families in need. She has resigned to take a position at Bristol Aggie. And that is a position that's open for us right now, again, looking at how can we, you know, spread out those responsibilities. But it's, we're putting responsibilities on staff that are already, you know, in many cases overwhelmed. But we wanted every area of the organization to unfortunately, you know, feel this. We didn't want to put the burden on one particular group. But, you know, overall, district-wide, we're down 12. So, you can see significant number of positions lost going into this school year. This information will be shared out with the public. Obviously, we've been updating everybody as we've been going. We've shared projections, but now as these numbers become closer to reality, I'll be getting this information out. Obviously, working closely with Meg to see, you know, how quickly we can update this. Meg and her team, and then the school secretaries are trying to process enrollments and withdrawals as quickly as they can, just so we can have an accurate number of what we could or should expect on day one. But, you know, there are going to be, obviously, as you can see, significant negative impacts to the classroom, to our buildings, to district operations. But what I will say is, you know, every confidence in the world that our staff will rally. I know it's going to be a challenging year for them. We'll obviously welcome the back of money on Monday and have a conversation in regards to this. We've already talked about it as an administrative team. You know, our first priority has to be of the students. And so, everything we do, as we do on a daily basis, is about our students, and we'll continue to be that way. And that's what our focus will be. But it's obviously going to take a lot more of us to support teaching and learning that happens in the classroom, making sure that every administrator, every central office position is prepared to support what's happening in the schools, because our faculty, as you can see, are going to need every ounce of support that they can get, especially when they're dealing with class sizes of, you know, 35-plus. That's the overview for E now. Happy to answer any questions on, on the information I provided to you. And again, we'll get this out. I would say, planned on sending a correspondence out to families no later than Monday afternoon. Typically, in years past, I've sent something out after convocation, just acknowledging that we've had convocation. So, that is obviously Monday, so, you know, Monday at the latest, this information would be going out. But knowing that, it's obviously going to be updated even all of next week prior to school start.
I think the towns also wanted to have a copy of that too, so they can have up-to-date information as well. Mr. Fisk, do you have a question?
Oh, I'd just like to say thank you for the update. Thank the town council of Bridgewater and the selectmen and the town meeting of Rainham for voting those extra budget funds for us, so we could get out of that 112 position. And then, just to summarize what you were talking about, my number of teachers reassigned, et cetera, et cetera. What you really focused on was putting teachers closer to the younger grades at the expense of more teachers at the high school. It's a trade-off, and it's, it's your decision to make that. I'm not questioning the decision. But in a nutshell, if someone were to say, how did you make this work?
Yes, I would say that's, that's, in a nutshell, yes. You know, obviously, you've heard me talk about this. I know as, you know, prior to the budget sub and the school committee as a whole, we have heard about class size, especially at the lower levels. So, for me, this was about trying to, again, not lower class size, but at least maintain, you know, higher numbers that we've already had. But yes, to your point, it's at the expense unfortunately of the high school. And obviously, you know, our student services department, that was also another focus, making sure that any position we brought back really had a student services focus or, you know, played a role there as well. So, I would say student services and trying to maintain class size as best as we could at the lower elementary were the two priorities as I was making my decisions, where to move staff, where to fill positions and not fill positions.
Thank you.
Mrs. Condon, Laverinto.
Mr. Powers, this is helpful, because I know, at least myself, and probably many of us, have been asked about some of these numbers and positions, and who's still around, who's not around. I guess I would, three of us, I know you, you also, Mr. Powers, have students, have kids that are at the high school, and there's a lot of conversation around this right now when kids have their schedules. I guess I would just ask, because on here is the class size, and the class size at the high school is a little funky, right? It's not apples to apples compared to what happens at the elementary, middle school. And I know Ms. Watson said it out this weekend, I can't remember the day. But maybe in the notes, if we could comment about how many classes were cut at the high school? Because that to me is what is, and I can't remember what those numbers are now. But, and I don't know if this is true, but what I'm hearing through kids and families is most seniors at this point have two study halls at the high school, which is disappointing. But, and I know Mrs. Watson, I think, tried to alleviate some of the, she, and the seniors probably took more of the pain than actually the other kids even at the high school. But I think if we could recognize that, because the class sizes isn't, it's a weird number at the high school.
And it's really, to your point, it's those four classes. So, it's not really, you know, some of those electives that we are still offering are going to have 40 students in it, but it's not reflective here. So, I could definitely try to add some additional information.
Right, just the number of classes that were lost. Like, there's 40 classes that were cut at the high school. Right, I can't remember exactly.
It's approximately 40.
It's approximately 40 classes were cut at the high school. I think it would be helpful to see. And I would just, and I know you all talk about it, again, our budget that was in lows and based on some of the grant money and other things, is, I guess, I would just say, is if there's any way during the year, if we can bring contract employee or contract or whatever, there's some extra fund, whatever happens, I wouldn't, I would like to see the high school, some priority area at the high school. And I know that's hard to bring someone in during the year, contract or whatever. It's just, it's disappointing to see these kids, especially juniors and seniors, of what is happening to them and what they have to go through. And I know everybody's trying to manage and deal with it. And kids have been entering classes that they didn't want to go into, but they are dealing with it, so, but thank you.
Yeah, I mean, there's really no good decision here. Do you move people around and have 26 and 28 still in kindergarten and first grade? Those are foundational grades where the teachers are trying to teach those students to read. And they're going to have difficulty doing that with a huge class size. And then at the high school level, they're missing 40 classes. So, they're, you know, two out of seven classes are going to be studies. So, there's really no good decisions for this coming budget here. Maybe the class sizes aren't as bad as we thought, but they're not great. The high school, not great this year. So, I know that the staff is going to do the very best they can. And like Mrs. Condon and Laverinto said, we focus a lot at elementary and middle because those are foundational grades. They're learning the basics. But we never prioritize the high school. And Mrs. Watson takes it with a grain of salt, and her staff takes it, and they do the best they can. But to her point, if we have extra funds, we need to do something at the high school. So, those are the kids that are responsible, and they can take it. But we're also trying to set them up for the best career, you know, secondary education, et cetera. So, they need, they need it as well.
Mrs. Keen? One question I forgot to ask, is I know we had over the years, and kindergarten had an aid. Or is that still true in all of kindergarten?
In all of our kindergarten classes, yes.
Do we have other comments? Mrs. White, another question.
Just a couple. And thank you for bringing up the need to focus on the high school. I know district-wide, it says we're losing four proctors and support staff. Is that from the high school?
No, there was, there was multiple locations. There was one, I believe, at the high school. There are two from the Williams, and the fourth one escapes me, I apologize. But I can.
No, thank you for that. I just kind of wanted, I know you're putting together a puzzle, not all the pieces. Thank you for doing it. But with that proctor and secretary loss, like, those are the class sizes that are the biggest. There's four bigger than, I think, 40, you said. What happens when the flu hits? What happens when the teachers out? Where are you going to put those extra kids? So, I think that's a huge focus that we need to get with. You mentioned enrollments and withdrawals for the current year. Do we have a figure? Just, I know you said they change daily, but.
I have it on my laptop. I can hear it's 180. 180 potential enrollments right now. Now, I think it was closer to about 100 of ones that we're fairly confident are actually going to come. And by that, I mean, Meg can actually go into the system and see, when was the last time they actually did anything for the registration process? She gets notified, the registration office gets notified when somebody opens a registration application. But if they opened that in June, but haven't done anything since, it, we're cautiously optimistic they may not be coming. So, that 180 isn't necessarily truly reflective of what we think will show up. I think it was closer to 80 to 100. They're making progress. It's, they're under review in the nurse's office. And then, but that is not to say that we don't want to more show up. In terms of the withdrawals.
And Mr. Powers, while you're looking for the withdrawals, I'm just curious, and you may not know right now, but maybe in the future, the withdrawals, are they, we've talked about it several years, are they more at the high school level? Because I know kids are leaving the district because of what's happened at the high school.
So, it's across the board. So, just, you know, for example, you know, at the elementary level right now, say on the Bridgewater side, we have eight first graders slated to move out, eight second graders, six in third grade, 14 in fourth grade, 14 in fifth grade. On the Rainham side, and I apologize, I don't have all the updated numbers here, but I do have it on my computer, but I can share this with you after the fact. You know, three withdrawals in kindergarten, five withdrawals in first grade. So, we're seeing it across the board. What I looked at it early, it was about 100 altogether withdrawals from the K to 8 level. I know in speaking with Ms. Watson, she was anticipating, just based on who she believes is going to say like BP or some of the other schools, it was about 100 students. 100 students more than what we typically lose. So, I think we ended the year, last year. Thought I ended it. Oh, I'm sorry. So, we ended last year 1,431 students at the high school. Right now, if everything gets processed as it should, our students that typically leave for BP and the other tech schools, private schools, we're still going to be down 100 students on top of those. So, again, it does seem as though that we are losing, but K to 8, we've lost similar numbers as well. We're getting a flurry of requests from parents right now for homeschooling as well, so that we're seeing an uptick in that.
And then we'll have final numbers. We do like the actual prefer seat counts, and then we can see year to year where.
Exactly.
Mr. Gudrow, did you have a question?
I did, I did have a question. I think, I agree, there's no, there's been no easy decisions. There's a lot of hard decisions. I was wondering if you could put some context perhaps around the class size figures, and maybe just talk for a few minutes about how has class size has been trending in BR? Obviously, and I'm sure they've been trending upward, but could you talk over the last few years about how these class sizes compare to, say, last year, a couple of years ago? And then could you also talk, if I could put you on the spot, about how do our class sizes compare to perhaps? And I know every district is different, but, you know, speaking broadly, statewide averages, what an average Massachusetts middle school should expect. Clearly, population size, right, as a city, as a town, whatever, you know, it varies. But, you know, there are also kind of best practices for maybe what an educational environment should look like. I'd be curious to hear your thoughts on one of those topics.
Sure, just to kind of give you some enrollment numbers first, and then, you know, I can speak about that. So, trying to go back to just the last couple of years per se, even going back to, say, school year '23, '24. And, you know, you've heard me talk about our class sizes on. And, you know, you've heard me talk about our class sizes on average have been higher than what we would advocate for. So class size, you know, we've been able to be under thirty, but for example, in the twenty-third, twenty-three, twenty-four school year, just on the Bridgewater side, kindergarten was at twenty-seven, first grade was at twenty-five, second grade was at twenty-eight, third grade was at twenty-eight, fourth grade was at twenty-seven, twenty-eight in fifth, twenty-seven in sixth, twenty-five in seventh, and twenty-six in eighth. When you look at those numbers, the following year, twenty-four, twenty-five, very similar, you know, changed by maybe a student up or a student down. You know, for example, kindergarten went from twenty-seven down to twenty-six, first grade went from twenty-five up to twenty-eight, second grade stayed at twenty-eight, third grade went from twenty-eight up to thirty, fourth grade twenty-seven up to twenty-nine, fourth, I'm sorry, fifth grade stayed at twenty-eight, twenty-seven to twenty-eight, twenty-five to twenty-eight, twenty-six to twenty-five. So it varies. On the Rainham side, again, just our numbers, class size average on the Rainham side has been a little bit lower, typically hovers around twenty-four to twenty-six. So again, going back to twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-eight in kindergarten, twenty-four, twenty-five was twenty-one. First grade was twenty-seven to twenty-eight, grade two, twenty-six, then twenty-seven. Grade three was twenty-four up to twenty-six. Grade four was twenty-four up to twenty-seven. Grade five, twenty-four up to twenty-eight. Grade six, twenty-six up to twenty-nine. Grade seven, twenty-three up to twenty-six. And twenty-five up to twenty-seven, grade eight. So you can see that those numbers are trending up over the last couple of years. Obviously, as we went into the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we were down some positions, so you know, we anticipated that to happen. But even, you know, to go back, we talked about it with our new teachers today, we were talking about class size, and one of our principals came up through the ranks as a teacher here, and he shared, you know, even, you know, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, it wasn't uncommon to have a class size of twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. So, you know, higher class size started to creep up. Certainly, we never want to be this high, but I don't think it's really been a new problem. This is my eleventh year in the district, these numbers have been pretty steady around that, again, creeping up, but you know, not out of the realm of what they've been. I think, you know, when we really look at comparable districts, you know, we are seeing lower class size, especially at the elementary level. We talked to some of our neighboring districts, you know, and they talk about their kindergarten classes with the paraprofessional, that nineteen, twenty students. It's hard to grasp that, and that's what our kids deserve. I think, you know, when we start to have some families look at leaving us for school choices, it's because of those type of situations where they're going to be in a kindergarten class of twenty-six, twenty-seven here, or eighteen, nineteen, you know, with another adult, you know, somewhere else. I don't have good middle school and high school data for you, I can certainly look into that and get that, how we compare to the other districts. I think ideally what we would advocate for, you know, there's, when we talk about class size going from, you know, twenty-five to twenty-four students, yes, it's lower. Is it going to have a significant impact on outcomes? You know, and obviously being a teacher once, I would say, well, when a student makes a difference, you know, twenty-four, twenty-five, I would never say no. But I think what we would really advocate for is to get down to those low twenties, the high teens, especially in that K to three level. I think we can, you know, have such a significant impact on those early grades, early literacy, early numeracy skills. And then as the students get up, they have a stronger foundation, and so now if they're in a class of twenty-five, twenty-six, you know, they're able to, you know, still progress, make progress, still have achievement because they've had those foundational skills. The more students are in a classroom, the less individual instruction they're going to get from the teacher. So I think anytime that we minimize those opportunities for our teachers, you know, we're doing the disservice to our students. It's not to say that, and I will say this so many times, and I'll say this to our faculty, I know they're still going to make every effort to do that. It's just going to take a little bit more time, because now we're going to have to do it with thirty students, but our staff's committed to it. It's not ideal, it's not something I think anybody in this room, certainly sitting up there, would want to advocate for, but you know, it's our reality right now. But hopefully we can get to a situation where we are putting the standard, and people looking at, well, it took BR a few years, but wow, they're at, you know, nineteen, twenty in kindergarten, and middle school doesn't go above twenty-five, high school has all these positions back in a lifetime, so that I think is ultimately where I'd like us to be.
Mr. King.
Yep, go ahead.
I'd just like to amplify, I don't want to pretend that some will respond to Mr. Guthro and really to folks listening at home, is we can hide class size disparities by families choosing to leave the district, right, at younger grids and moving out and saying, I don't want my kid to go there anymore, so they, they lose that enrollment that the superintendent was talking about in the younger grids. We can hide K to eight, you know, class size issues by, as we were just talking about, taking stuff away from the high school, where there's not, as Ms. Conrad LaBrento said, there's not a great number for what's a class size at the high school, but when you have, when you hear the number of forty classes cut, that's a real loss to those students at the high school. And then their parents are voting to go to alternative high schools or homeschooling, as the superintendent said. So your enrollment may stay the same, the enrollment we should be serving is a lot bigger, I'll submit to you, than what we are serving.
Yeah, I mean, I think the problem is twofold right now. Our population has been increasing by a hundred, net hundred every year, we'll see what this year comes out to. So that's been increasing steadily year over year, but our staffing levels have either remained stagnant or been reduced every year. So last year was the tipping point where parents were like, hey, we're noticing that class sizes are getting bigger and bigger. Well, you know, because students are keep moving in and our staffing levels are staying the same, where they're getting reduced. Last year it was reduced by seven. This year it's a net thirty-four loss, like, we, yes, we're going to have thirty-five in a class if that's what we're doing, so. Next year, we need to, we're, this isn't, we're going to keep talking about this over and over again, so. We definitely have tried to implement some things this year, and I know we have a lot of joint meetings with towns coming up, so we definitely need to figure a plan, because every school, every classroom is going to be affected this year in Iowa. Thank you, Mr. Powers. Next, we have long-range planning subcommittee report with Mr. Loesch.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. The long-range planning subcommittee met on seven twenty-three with committee member Mr. Guthro, Mr. Fitzgibbons, myself, superintendent Powers, and Ms. Madoodle in attendance. The committee reviewed the superintendent evaluation process, the student success plan, and the superintendent proposed four potential goal areas for student learning, professional practice, and two district improvement goals. The committee provided initial feedback and assisted superintendent to draft goals, action steps, and benchmarks, and evidence for the next subcommittee. The long-range planning subcommittee met, again, earlier this evening with the same members in attendance. Committee did a brief overview of the prior meeting, and then superintendent Powers presented his proposed goals, key action steps, and benchmarks, and objectives for all four goal areas. I want to thank Ms. Madoodle for sending the draft copy of all goals out to our committee members, so everyone should be familiar with all four goals, areas, and key benchmarks and objectives. The only two changes that we had as a result of these was on goal number one, where Mr. Fitzgibbons made a motion and it passed, and for the superintendent to amend the student learning goal to provide baseline data from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year in order to determine a starting point for each area within the key, excuse me, benchmarks and evidence. The other adjustment we made as well was for goal number two and professional practice. Mr. Fitzgibbons asked for a summary of meetings to be included in the superintendent's report incorporating participation of stakeholders, feedback, and potential action items. There was feedback provided on the two other goals, but no, no changes were recommended by the subcommittee. The subcommittee did recommend and pass all four goals off to tonight's, to the full committee.
Thank you. Accordingly, I will entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's goals as recommended by the long-range planning subcommittee.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Loesch, second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. Any discussion or questions?
I'd just like to say, Mr. Powers and Mr. Loesch were great together in kind of getting to a point where we could get to a, a whole document and, you know, really took into account what we talked about in the first meeting, much as Ms. Mayfield did last year in her role as the chair of the committee, and, and I think that's a very healthy process going forward. So I would recommend that to the long-range planning committee, whoever may serve on it in the future, to really take advantage of allowing the chair and the superintendent to discuss the goals kind of offline and bring it back with really solid, a really solid document to bring forward to the rest of the committee, to allow very focused discussion instead of kind of scattershot discussion, if you will, of fully in favor.
Thank you. And then, when and how will the superintendent report out on the status of the goals?
Happy to take that. The timeline established by the long-range committee, I believe we've amended it the last couple of years, because I think it calls for maybe a January update. We've waited until February, just because that way we've at least gone through the budget presentation, it can provide evidence to that. So we now tentatively schedule for February for the mid-year review, but certainly then to entertain a different one.
Do we have other questions?
I just want to know, I just want to thank the superintendent, one, for putting together some stuff for goals, and also really with a high level of ambition, I think to the point where sometimes we can give back to kind of scale it back a little bit.
We need them to be attainable.
Exactly, but it's commendable that, you know, this really comes from a good place, that he wants to see students achieve and do well, and really do well by his staff who's been within addition, so thank you for putting those in this process.
I appreciate that, thank you. And thank you to the long-range committee for working so collaboratively together on this process, appreciate it all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Loesch, for putting that together, and Mr. Powers and the committee for working on that. Seeing no more questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have transportation subcommittee report. Mrs. Mayfield is not available this evening, but her report was in the drive. There was no action items or votes, so I'm going to continue on unless anyone had any questions on that. Okay, seeing none. Next, we have policy subcommittee report with Mrs. Conrad LaBrento.
Thank you, Ms. King. The policy subcommittee met on August twelve, and in attendance were myself, Mrs. King, Mr. Guthro, and Mrs. Boy Thomas was there, a very event, she was late due to traffic. Policy JQ student fees was reviewed for a second time. School committee member had suggested some changes, and the committee discussed those changes, decided to incorporate two of those changes into the policy. These included defining the quote inability to pay and adding language around the superintendent's ability to waive certain fees. The committee did discuss the other changes that were recommended around students with late fees and those permissible penalties. The committee felt that this was an item they wanted to keep in the policy as they were permissible but not required. So at this, this time, I would make a motion to approve...
Sorry, first, we have the second reading.
Oh, sorry. So at this time, I would make a motion to waive the second reading of policy JQ.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Conrad LaBrento, second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then a motion to approve.
Now I'd make a motion to approve policy JQ student fees.
Motion made by Mrs. Conrad LaBrento, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Loesch. Any questions or discussion on them? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next was the community use of facilities. There was a request to review this policy. The committee discussed the policy at great length. There were initially several language changes that were reviewed. The subcommittee discussed the motivation behind creating a policy and changing the policy, and the subcommittee decided to leave it as is for the time being and take another look if other questions or concerns were to come in. And also, given that the policy only really applies to the high school and not BMS or RMS, as the towns control the use of those, those sports facilities, the committee felt it was better to leave it as is rather to get into who and when could use the sports facilities at the high school. No action was taken on that policy.
Okay.
And next, it was requested that, sorry, it was requested that the subcommittee review policy IMG and animals in schools. The policy update was born out of the Bridgewater Police Department's desire to implement a therapy comfort dog into their outreach at the schools. Mr. Powers explained that he wanted to be sure that the program went in conflict with our current policy. The committee reviewed the district's internal animals and schools' internal protocol, and we, the edits that were made to the policy were made to ensure that they were consistent with our protocol and that there wasn't conflict. So at this time, I would make a motion to waive the first reading of policy IMG, animals in schools.
Motion made by Mrs. Conrad, second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. Discussion or questions on that one?
Yes, just a quick one.
Did you have...
Did we look in other districts and the policy manual?
Yes.
Just to understand.
Yeah, we probably reviewed, I probably reviewed between eight and ten other policies from other districts. We had in the animals in school policy, and that was IMG, and we added to our policy the therapy and the therapy dogs in schools, and we reviewed other districts, and won't say we copied and pasted, but we kind of looked at kind of what was, I'll say, best practice across other policies and incorporated some of those in addition to our protocol.
And this was mostly born out of the, was it Bridgewater Police? Do you want that taken?
I know Plymouth County, the Plymouth County District Attorney's Office has a pretty robust comfort therapy dog program throughout the county. I know Bridgewater Police has been interested in expanding and becoming part of that program. So just an initial conversation with Chief Dumonti recently, they were going to start exploring, really making it a reality. I can't say for sure that it'll hundred percent come to fruition, but we wanted to make sure that if we did want to move forward, or if Chief Dumonti decides to move forward with the program for the Bridgewater Police, that we did have policies that, as Ms. Conrad LaBrento said, were in conflict with going forward with this. So we're excited with the possibility, certainly something as the superintendent I support. I had some experience when I was a building principal, having comfort, comfort dogs, therapy dogs in, and we've actually used them throughout the district during my time here for various events at our staff wellness fair, and unfortunately, we've had some tragedies occur within the district that we've actually reached out to Plymouth County and, and the therapy comfort dogs come in. So they've been well received by staff and by students, and it's certainly something that I would advocate and support for, and I think this policy really gets us in line with that practice.
And, Madam Chair, may I just add that we probably all during budget season would want to have that comfort dog here with us?
Yeah, exactly. And then this will have a second reading at our September meeting. Seeing any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you have anything else?
Yeah, I would just add, there was discussion around the need to address the competency determination and graduation requirements, and we did just receive some things around this, so we do need to create a policy on that to DUCI by December, so we are, we will review some of that in September, October, and then MASC just sent a list of probably eight or nine policies, and... policies that need to be updated. So over the next few months, we'll be taking a look at some of those. That's it.
Thank you so much. Next is Budget Subcommittee Report of Rachel King, myself, for August 20th. The date of the subcommittee meeting is August 11th. On August 11th, the Budget Subcommittee met at 5:30 in the superintendent's conference room. In attendance were Mrs. Davenport, Mr. Loesch, Superintendent Powers, Assistant Superintendent Barry, Ms. Babalola, Ms. Robichaud, Mr. Chaka, Mrs. McDougal, and myself. Ms. Hoy Thomas attended as a member of the public. Mr. Powers gave an update and overview of the current budget, staffing, and classroom sizes, which he had already given this evening. Next discussed was the state function code transfers, which is an annual transfer that we need to do at the close of the fiscal year. Ms. Babalola gave an overview of the state function transfer report, an attached spreadsheet and a summary page. This is required at the close of each fiscal year to ensure each function code is properly adjusted when the budget is created in January for the following fiscal year, July through June. The function code amounts budgets are estimated and this must be reconciled before the audit. It does not change the bottom line of the budget. The school committee must vote to do these transfers. On the attachment to the summary report on page nine of nine, Ms. Babalola has indicated the reasoning for each transfer. Accordingly, I will entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 transfers between state function codes as follows. Increase of $101,478.87 to the 1,000 Series Admin Technology. Decrease of $101,478.87 to the 2,000 Series Instructional Services. Decrease of $381,018.22 to the 3,000 Series Other Student Services. Decrease of $132,730.99 to the 4,000 Series Operations and Management. Decrease of $107,871.79 to the 5,000 Series Benefits and Fixed Costs. No fixed charges. No change to the 7,000 Series, no change to the 8,000 Series. Increase of $621,620.00 to the 9,000 Series Programs with Other Schools.
So moved.
So moved. Bye. I'm sorry, it was Mr. Fitzgibbons, second by Mr. Loesch. Do I have questions or discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, that was the facilities project update, which is the next agenda item, and there is a report that Mr. Chaka provided, an update on the summer projects. See, also the August 11 budget sub minutes does have a detailed analysis of that as well. Following that is proctor salaries. Proctors are used throughout the district in various schools and roles such as covering classes, covering the library, et cetera. They are not in any bargaining unit, so while they are able to opt into the health insurance, they do not gain any other union benefits. Proctors work 6.5 hours per day during the school year. Because they have so much flexibility, they are vital to the district in their roles. In January of 2023, former school committee member, Mrs. Holbrook, expressed the need to review and increase the proctor salary. At that time, we had approximately 25 proctors, and their rate of pay had not been increased since 2015. Accordingly, the rate of pay was increased by 2% that year, and the budget sub and the school committee acknowledged the need to review their rate of pay annually to keep them competitive and to retain them. In January 2024, the pay rate again was reviewed and increased by 2%. Either by inadvertence or oversight, the budget sub did not review the proctor rate of pay this January. Admittedly, we were in the midst of the 2026 budget and were hyper-focused on that. Currently, we have 14 proctors in the district we laid off for this year due to staffing reductions. The rate of pay is $20.03 currently. The financial impact of increasing a 2% raise to these proctors would be $9,534 for the fiscal year. This is still below the step one of the ESP contract for fiscal year 2526, which is $21.60. Accordingly, I will entertain a motion to approve a 2% increase to the proctor hourly rate for fiscal year 2026.
So moved.
Sorry, I was, I missed the rate. One second, a moment. So moved by Ms. Hoy Thomas and seconded by Mr. Loesch. Do we have questions and discussion on them? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next topic we discussed was the fiscal '24 audit, which we already discussed during the workshop and earlier with Ms. Davis, who attended the meeting. After that, we did discuss the athletic fees. We received an update from Mr. Powers, and we will revisit that once the fall roster and payments are complete, and no action was taken. We had several contracts to review for printers, et cetera. The first of which is Core Technologies for the printer contracts. This is a three-year contract and includes printers, laser cartridges, labor and parts, and software to monitor page counts. This went out to bid through COMBIES, and we received bids from two vendors. This was the lowest bid. I will entertain a motion to authorize the business office to enter into a three-year contract for printer services with Core Technologies in the amount of $2,600 per month for the term of three years.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Loesch, second by Ms. Conrad LaBrento. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The second was also with Core Technologies for equipment acquisition. This went out to bid also through COMBIES to eight vendors, and we received one bid from Core Technologies. This is a three-year contract for paper cut, which are e-printer card readers, and the contract amount is $31,650.20. This will hopefully reduce excessive or unnecessary copying and printing. I will entertain a motion to authorize the business office to enter into a three-year contract for equipment acquisition services with Core Technologies in the amount of $31,650.20.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Loesch. Do I have a second?
Second by Ms. Conrad LaBrento.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the third contract we reviewed is a three-year contract renewal with Power School. This is our, what is this, SIS?
Student Information System.
Student Information System. The business office negotiated a 033 increase for the term of the contract. It was not put up to bid at this time, as changing to a new SIS system is a very involved process and needs several years to embed a new system. The business office will start this process during the term of this three-year contract to explore other options and be able to properly transfer over data that we currently have. I will entertain a motion to authorize the business office to enter into a three-year contract with Power School in the amount of $336,254.35 over the term of three-year contract.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Loesch. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Conrad LaBrento. Do I have any questions or comments?
Yes.
Mrs., I'm sorry.
Again.
Ms. Hoy Thomas.
With the Power School, when you buy it, the software, does it come with modules that we have to add on, such as like discipline? Or do we buy the whole software as one unit?
So, yes, there are, when you buy Power School, it does come with certain modules built in. There are add-ons that you can purchase. Meg, you might speak better to this. There's like an attendance tracker, plugin, I think you call it plugins, not modules, but.
Yeah, so we have the AI module, we have special programs, AI special programs in our enrollment software. Those are additional modules, which are an expansion of the SIS.
Thank you.
Then, so what is the plan with Power School? Are we happy with it? Or, because we did not put it out to bid at this time, so what was your thought?
So I think overall, Power School is certainly much better than our previous student information system. There are, you know, functions of Power School that I think we'd always love to see improved. Meg is constantly working with their support systems to see what type of enhancements, upgrades can, you know, we can download and try to improve. I think it behooves us at some point, and as you alluded to, it is a multi-year process, but it does loathe at some point to start looking to see if there are other options, which we certainly know there are other options, but are there other options that are going to be better than Power School? You know, several districts around us use Aspen, which again is just another student information system. And, you know, there are many positives that come out of Aspen. I'm sure there's some concerns, but Aspen seems to be one of the bigger ones out there. There are several districts around us that use Power School, so it's not uncommon, it's not as though it's, you know, we're one off. I know several local districts in Massachusetts use Power School, I know Stone uses it, so even locally, districts use it. But I think it's to the point where we want to be sure it's servicing all of our needs. I think when Power School first came in, and that was probably seven years ago, Meg, now?
2017.
2017, okay.
2017.
Yeah, I mean, it was the one that the teachers seemed to be most impressed with, they were most excited about. We had several different vendors come in, and I think, you know, we want to replicate that process and see, okay, is this still the program you want, or is there something else out there? But it does take multiple years. One, to get the vendors in to do some type of presentation, giving our teachers access to be able to use it, you know, they use the term play around with it. There's always some type of like sandbox that they can play with. But then even just the data conversion, that's not something that we would in June be like, let's switch in July. We may need months and months and months to be able to work with a new vendor, to be able to get all of our data to roll over and roll over accurately. So, you know, we would be multiple years away if we are going to switch. But Meg and I have talked, and, you know, it's one of those that we think we want to hear from staff. Is this something you want to explore? Is now the time to start looking at it? Or, you know, is Power School servicing their needs and our needs as a district?
Do you know how Power?
No.
Do you know how Power School is comparatively to other programs that you have seen in the Commonwealth? Or you're not sure?
So.
Pricewise?
Pricewise, I think it's fairly comparable. I don't remember when we had the vendors in, you know, now what the price difference, you know, was at the time. We haven't necessarily explored other vendors at this point, so I can only kind of go back to 2017 when we first brought them in. And they were, you know, roughly the same, but because we've had to buy these additional modules, obviously, we're kind of going up and beyond where, you know, one of the things that we've heard from some of these other programs is that it is all encompassing and we don't have to purchase other modules. So that's, you know, something else we want to explore to see if that's really true. But, you know, I think at first, Power School was like, oh, here's all we can offer you. We were pretty excited about that, and then come to find out it was, well, we don't know if you're that, you have to pay for it. So, you know, I think a little misleading initially for us, but certainly something that, you know, I think it's time to explore other options.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, I think it's always good to explore when you can and make sure we have the best deal. One of the things, you know, as we go forward with any of these BI systems or whatever you want to call them, we should have pretty solid performance guarantees around uptime. You owe us money if our data gets hacked, et cetera, et cetera, so that they have to pay attention to us, and otherwise, they're going to be sending a chunk of money back to us because they were only up 90% of the time, and, you know, parents couldn't access grades in a timely manner. You got hacked, and now all of our kindergarteners' data is out on the dark web. We don't want that, so you're going to pay us if we have to do it.
Do I have any other questions? Mr. Loesch?
Just super quick. I think given also the reduced penetration capacity and looking at a switch at this point, it wouldn't have been realistic. Typically moving SIS, human resources, and special programs at the same time requires additional hands, resources, and money to make that switch, especially with a significant amount of migration.
I agree. Seeing no more questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The budget sub also approved the July 7, 2025 budget subcommittee minutes. The last item to note regarding budget, on Thursday, August 14, Vice 2025, Vice Chair Loesch and I hosted the joint working group meeting at the O'Donohue Middle School in Bridgewater. In attendance were Superintendent Powers, Rainham Select Board President Patricia Riley, Rainham FinCon member Dr. Sue Brumindowski, and Bridgewater Town Council member Sonja Strickles. Bridgewater Town Council President John Moretti wasn't able to attend. We also had in attendance, in the audience, school committee member, Ms. Hoy Thomas, and Bridgewater Town Council member Mark Lendy. During the meeting, we discussed the challenges of the budget cycle, as the regional school district cycle runs earlier than the municipal budget cycle of the two rubber towns. Specifically, when we were asking in January through March during each budget cycle for a commitment or estimate of an assessment increase, the towns do not start their budget cycle at that point, or they're still in the process of meeting with their department heads. We further discussed ways we could collaborate better during these cycles, such as regular joint meetings and meetings with Mr. Powers and the town manager and town administrator, as well as having Superintendent Powers and/or the budget chair attend Rainham Select Board meetings and Bridgewater Town Council or FinCon meetings to give updates. We discussed the letter sent from the towns and the potential audit and operational review regarding scope and payment. This was agreed upon to be further discussed at the September joint meeting and October joint working meeting. Both towns expressed concerns about the financial outlook for fiscal year 2027 as The next budget subcommittee meeting will be scheduled for September 15, 2025 at 5:30 in the superintendent's conference room, and that concludes my report. Do we have any other questions? Seeing none. Mr. Chaka was not able to attend this evening, but he did prepare a report, which was in our drive to review. I will not read the report, but if anyone has questions on it, please let me or Mr. New business, we have approval of general ledger warrants. I will entertain a motion to approve the general ledger warrants dated June 30, 2025, July 24, 2025, July 31, 2025, August 1, 2025, and August 7, 2025.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Fitzgibbons, this is second by Mrs. Conrad LaBrento. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have one extension. Thank you. Under other business, I do not have any. We have a second public comment. I do not see any members of the public.
Joan, if I may, for your business?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
Just in lieu of the announcements of the class sizes, I know the new contract that we signed with BREA has a joint committee on class size that requires we meet in November and there's a few other members of the school committee, superintendent, assistant, super, and I can't recall who else, but I don't know how we get that ball rolling, and I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you for putting that on my horizon. I'll talk to Mr. Powers about that.
It was the BREA members that.
Yes, yep.
And I would take issue, Madam Chair, with the fact that we don't have a member of the public here. We have a important member of the public here from Rainham, Ms. Riley.
Sorry, that is true. Mrs. Riley, would you like a public comment?
I'm all set.
Thank you, I apologize.
No problem.
Under announcements, Mr. Fitzgibbons, do you have an announcement that you would like to state, please?
Yeah, actually, people have heard the name a few times in this meeting, but on Friday, the 22nd, at 2:00 PM, in the horseshoe driveway of what is now the old Bridgewater Middle School, we're going to have a naming dedication ceremony to rename it the Edward J. O'Donohue Middle School in honor of Mr. O'Donohue, who served as the first full, fully regionalized superintendent here. I have the privilege of working with him during that time, and I can't think of a better honor, so inviting all the public listening tonight to come down. So inviting all the public listening tonight to come down, probably park in the big lot and, and come over to the, to the Horseshoe Lot and, you know, honor, honor a great man. Unfortunately, he passed within the last couple of years, but his family will be there to, to accept the honor on his behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons, and thank you for taking this on and leading the charge on that. I really appreciate that. Further, Bridgewater-Rainham Regional Staff Convocation is scheduled for Monday, August 25th, at 8:30 AM here in the auditorium. All school committee members are invited and encouraged to attend. It's, I've gone to a couple of them, and they're, it's a great feeling to have all the staff back together, to feel like the excitement of that first day. So if you can attend, it's a great way to be there for the staff, especially with going into this year, they gave all the positivity, all the positivity that we can give them. The first day of school for grades 1 through 12 is Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Kindergarten and pre-K return Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025. Budget Sub is Monday, September 15th. We have a joint school committee, Rainham Select Board, Rainham FinCon, Rainham Town Administrator, Bridgewater Town Council, Bridgewater FinCon, Bridgewater Town Manager, every, and school committee. Everyone is invited to attend that on Wednesday, September 17th, 2025, at 7:00 at BR here in the library. And then our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting is scheduled on Wednesday, September 24th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Rainham Middle School. Do I have other announcements from school committee members? Seeing none, that concludes our regular school committee meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting at 8:40 PM.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Loesch, show of the second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?